Good evening, welcome to the August 3rd, 2015 council meeting. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
All in favor? So move. Next item is public comments. At this time, anybody in the public that wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight, now is your chance. Jeremy?
For the record. Good evening. I'm Jeremy W. Jones Esquire, landed gentleman of the Partridge Road. I should be out mowing my field, but here I am again. Looking at some of the comments from past council meetings, that one of the concerns of some counselors was a lack of options or things haven't been pursued with regard to the Saturday bus. So what I did is I got some rider opportunities. Some of these may be just rhetorical questions, but I'm just throwing it out there. I see lots of options regarding Saturday transportation for our Hamden citizens. Please pursue some of these options. From what I understand, last Saturday was the last Saturday, according to everything. So this coming Saturday, our citizens will be without the bus. I don't know if any of you have received any information from the BAT. I can tell you that on my last communication, or communication from them to me, was Thursday, July 16th. That's two and a half weeks ago. And the statement is from Lori Lynn Scott, the bus superintendent. "I received your email and I will forward you the data in a report at no cost to you. Thanks, Lori." The data being the data that they were collecting. I have not received that, so I could not analyze that any further. But I think I did check some of Bangor's budget items regarding the bus. And I'll dig deeper, but I can tell you, I see so much waste that it boggles my mind, I tell you. Some of the articles I read, they, different groups were asking for more service. And even here, more, more service, but the expense is just insane. If they would just attack their schedules in a more efficient way, they could cover, just with the existing amount of monies and times, they could cover probably twice the area. But that's up to them. What we're looking at is Hamden. So anyways, here's, here's an option. The BAT, the 11th hour negotiating. Last chance, going once, twice. A starting proposition, stop me if you've heard this one before. I think everybody's heard this one before, so I'll, I'll move on. But basically, we should negotiate extremely hard with them. And if they don't want to negotiate, move to the next option. Commercial, request for quote, direct RFQ to all taxi, local taxi and van services. Just going to and from Hamden and Shaw's, Pickering Square. From there, riders can get on any bus they want. Limit the schedule runs for Hamden residents. How low can they go? They're commercial, they'll find a way, they'll get that, they'll compete and get the price down. Ride sharing programs. This one looks like a new opportunity for people in Bangor and Hamden area on Saturdays. If in fact, there are 25 to 30 riders on Saturday, at five bucks a ride, one could take in 300 bucks plus tips, going to and from Hamden, Shaw's, and Pickering Square. I'm thinking that earning $1,200 a month should cover vehicle payments, fuel, insurance, and a nice wage. Set up a schedule for full loads and minimize run. Those ride sharing programs are Lyft, L-Y-F-T, that's L-Lift.com, and Uber, U-B-E-R, uber.com. And then there's the much talked about links. I looked into that, and it is open to the general public. Saturday service, though, is not listed, but I bet you could pursue and negotiate it. And then, of course, there's private. One could set up their own personal rideshare system with their newfound friends. Most names are in the public record of hearings and town meetings regarding the BAT service. And by their own testimony, they know even more people that would use it. Well, didn't riders do this before? Then get more organized and make it happen. This is up to the individual. Just like the old days, call around, set up, you know, set it up. Voila, you have transportation. Then the other one, which kind of irked me, was when certain people got up and, you know, tried to chastise people and tried to belittle the amount of money that it was. And even, even taking a cup of coffee, or, or there was, there's a comedic writer in the BDN about sharing a beer. I can tell you, the most expensive beer I ever bought was out on Monhegan Island, at the Monhegan Brewery. And that was five bucks. It was great beer, though, I can tell you that. But anyways, that would be like, if, in this context, it's, you are threatening my, my home, my personal property? That's how I look at it. Because if I don't pay my tax bill, that's what's down the line. And so you're not asking me for, or others, for a coffee, or a beer, or just two cents a day. You're demanding it. And then, you're taking a sip and throwing it on the ground. Because that's how inefficient this is. And you think I want to be supportive of that? No way. I'll support efficiency. But the charitable organization, or Transportation for All, other nonprofits, anyone belong to one? Instead of demanding subsidy from others? Does your church or another have a van? Organize a route, share a schedule, practice what you preach by example, voluntarily give of yourself first. Pass the basket, I'm sure donations and tips will be graciously given and accepted. Be part of the solution. Oh. Here's something, another item. I bought a Hamden's Day Children's Day raffle ticket. Nice, nice boat at Hamlin's Marina, from Hamlin's Marina. Nice boats up, first prize. Bike donated by Ski Rack is second prize, and third prize is a, is a nice grill by, donated by the Home Depot. But this money was my money, my disposable income, and I bought it. I chose to buy a ticket to support an organization and a, and an event that I believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, public comments closed. Moving on to the next item under policy agenda. Public hearings, zoning ordinance text amendment, Article 4.7, off-street parking. This time, I'll ask the town planner and development, Dean Bennett, to step forward and explain these.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, folks. What this, in short, does is it allows the planning board to consider public parking, should it become available, as a means to satisfy the requirements of the land use regulation in town. Right now, any parking to be created associated with a development must be off-site. The developer must provide the parking with the development being proposed, because Hamden has no official, or non-official, public parking areas. So consequently, the planning board is limited to acting in that capacity. Our zoning ordinance requires a certain number of parking spaces based on the use proposed. That is, that is the developer's obligation to provide those. We recently are considering a rezoning change in more central, in the middle of town, where an opportunity exists for the town to actually create public parking areas. If that should be done at some point in the future, the language that we're proposing here would allow the planning board to consider that land, those parking spaces, as a means to satisfy those regulations. Thereby, relieving the obligation to create that parking as part of the development. Particularly important in the area that we're talking about rezoning here downtown. Because there, if there should be available spaces, and I understand there's an interest in doing that, then right now, the planning board, as it sits, will not be able to consider those. This is a change, simply two sentences, which allow them to consider public parking as a means to satisfy the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. And, just a minute. Any public comment?
Evening. My name is Walt Couples. I live with my wife, Deb Phillips Couples, at 42 Main Road North, MAP 36, Lot 10, in the middle of Hamden's new downtown district. I'm here to speak in favor of rezoning the main road to Village Commercial. But before I do, let me sing the praises of our town officials. On January 14th, I met with Susan Lussard and Dean Bennett, because I thought it was time we create a property maintenance ordinance. Dean broadened the focus, and three weeks later, I was in a planning and development committee meeting, development committee meeting, supporting a rezoning of the main road. So I went back to January 14th. During this whole time, everyone in town government has been watchful of the rights of the citizens in this affected area. This includes the planning and development committee, the planning board, and the council. Thank you. We are in good hands. Now to the business at hand. It is time to change to Village Commercial on the main road. If Hamden is going to be seen as a progressive community we want it to be, we need a downtown area. Every town I know of has a downtown district, which is the area where people's needs are met for shopping, medical, banking, schooling, computer, auto parts, hardware, and restaurants. We have all this. We just need a town center to pull it all together. This rezoning would create that center. Of the 13 properties, 12 landowners are supportive of this change. This was not always the case. When we were in a tight-knit residential neighborhood, we successfully kept McDonald's from invading our neighborhood. We were unsuccessful in keeping Irving out, but we were not only, we found out we were not only fighting Irving, but also council members. Yes, Hamden council members. Some of them ridiculed us as being crazy, because we didn't want, did not want more for our properties. Times have changed. You might ask why? One reason is the transition's going on to the individuals in these properties. Of the 13 properties, eight are in transition. We are ready for change. Let your approval tonight of the rezoning be a first step in the creation of downtown Hamden. Listen to the people approve the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion?
Just a question for Dean, just clarification. I understand the intent, and I'm supportive of it. But I'm unclear as to, in the future, when we've identified the actual physical parking options, and there's something going forward, is it going to be up to the auspices of the zoning officer? Or is it going to be a full planning board in terms of approving parking planning as part of site plan review?
Site, only the planning board performs site plan review.
Okay.
The code office comes into play when you're talking about construction specifications or interpretation of the ordinance. Initially, a code enforcement officer will interpret, as in this, development coming in, for example. The code enforcement officer, I will go to him and say, here's what we've got. The code enforcement officer will interpret the ordinance and advise me as to what the parking requirements are. At that point, we initiate a site plan review process, which goes to the planning board. So the answer is, planning board?
Thank you. Dean?
As we look, you know, at properties and looking for opportunities for parking, there is a burned-out home? Is that land up for, I mean, what are the plans? Does that land up for sale?
I, I don't know. I do know that over the last eight years, I have had a number of requests to utilize that property that, in my opinion, would have been no adversely impacting in that area than an office with three, you know, dentist office, accountant, a number of different things that could certainly, you know, be developed there with adequate parking, that would not negatively impact the middle of the community, certainly. It was unable to do that, because of the zoning regulations and restrictions that we have in place, being solely residential. If you were to go forward on our next agenda item and approve the zone change, that opens up opportunity for that house, as well as the other people down there. Now, I think it's important also to mention, though, it doesn't relieve any of those property owners from meeting the provisions of the zoning ordinance. So you can't, just with a simple zone change, go in and put anything you want there, creating traffic, creating congestion. It still has to comply with the zoning ordinance. But the approval of the zone change is a huge step in giving those residences, such as Walt and the others that he spoke of, opportunity for those properties that they would not otherwise have.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the zoning ordinance text amendment, Article 4.7, off-street parking.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Moving on to the next item. Item 2B, zoning ordinance MAC amendment, Main Road North. Dean, would you explain that again, please?
Yeah, this is the, the item to actually do the zone change of that area. I, as you know, Walt had come in to us back in January, and we explored the opportunity that this might offer, the goods, the bads, the uglies of this consideration, of this change. Walt did a tremendous amount of legwork in talking to the property owners in that area. One of our primary concerns was, because of the past history, particularly the sensitivity of that area, was to see what the, what the perspective was on the people that lived there. And overwhelmingly, they were supportive of the change. What, when it went from the PND Committee to the council, and you folks sent it to the planning board, the planning board was very conscientious. And of course, I'm just developing a relationship with the planning board, and I'm, I have to say, I'm really excited about the level of ability that they have as individuals and collectively. They're very conscientious, and one of their primary concerns was, is that, in essence, what we're doing is we're taking a chunk of residential B property and residential A property, opposite sides of the street, and turning it into a commercial area. Limited commercial, to an extent, when compared to other areas. But certainly, a commercial area. And their primary concern is, is what are we going to leave behind? What impact are we going to create when we, when we draw those lines? What's left over? And what's the impact of that going to be? Which, so the map that I have included in this packet, that Denise has forwarded on to you, we did it this way, so you can actually look down through the zones to see what that impact was. And once the planning board saw that the northern end of this side of the road already had a commercial establishment, the whole back area is, in fact, the school property. There's an abundant amount of land in behind these houses for parking, or whatever the requirements might necessitate. Certainly not impacting any of the properties. And at the other end is, in fact, the superintendent's office, which is then the school property. So the impact on adjacent properties is minimal. On the other side of the street, you have the northern border, which is the Kiwanis Hall, you know, in Irving. Where there again, the parcel to the rear is principally town of Hamden property. And the other border is the Cottage, Cottage Street. Yeah, Cottage Street. And the house down here on the corner, which would remain in residential A, is a significant distance away from that street, it sets back, which would be further, certainly, from the commercial establishment, if should happen. And there is a buffer of natural trees and distance between that and the residential subdivision. Once the planning board realized that the impact of this really is minimal, if negligible, they were very supportive of this concept. And we came back to you with a recommendation to approve, for the various reasons I described earlier.
Thank you. Any public comment? Questions? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the zoning ordinance MAP amendment to the Main Road North.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Moving on to the next item, under new business, sewer commitment, April to June 2015. Do I have a, any discussion? A motion to accept?
Make a motion that we accept sewer commitment from April through June of 2015.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The next item is the ambulance bill abatement, 2012 to 2013. We previously discussed this earlier in the finance committee. Recommendation was to abate. The 2012 for $27,271, the 2013 for $35,849.27. Is there any public comment? Seeing none? Discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, as per the recommendation from the finance committee, that we abate the ambulance bill amounts for the year 2012. It is listed at $27,271, and the year 2013 is $35,849.27. Unless Denise, you need that separately.
Second.
Then let me modify that motion to limit it to first, to year 2012, in the amount of $27,271.
My second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Next?
I make a motion that we abate ambulance bill abatements in the amount of $35,849.27 for the year 2013.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? The next item is personal property tax abatements. It was recommendation in the finance committee earlier this evening to abate account 147, Sunshine Laundry, for the sum of $922.10, and account 186 for Northeast Timber, at $5,980.11. Any public comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept, or we approve, personal property tax abatement recommended by finance for account 147, Sunshine Laundry, for $922.10.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? Do I have a motion for the next one?
Make a motion that we approve the personal tax abatement recommended by the finance committee on account 186, Northeast Timber, for the amount of $5,980.11.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? In favor? Opposed? The next item is the tax increment finance policy amendments. Planning and Development Committee recommendation. Counselor Shakespeare?
I'd like to refer this to Dean Bennett for explanation.
The tax increment financing policy was established, I think, around 2002, 2003, here in the community. And thanks to Counselor McAvoy for pointing out that the, the policy, although followed by the community since that time, doesn't accurately reflect or assign responsibilities by title. The town has evolved, over the last eight or so years, from an economic development advisory committee, which, under the leadership of Brian Foster, basically has been replaced by the Planning and Development Committee. I'm, I'm coming on as a, as a different, different type of person, I should say. In that, Brian was a realtor. Brian was able to negotiate, and he negotiated land deals, because he was a licensed realtor and able to do that. And then upon the blessing of the council, things went forward. I'm not a realtor, not going to make believe I am, so I don't do that. The PND Committee basically has stepped into that, that position, to actually do those negotiations. I'll bring, I'll bring the folks in with some suggestions, and then you folks, the PND Committee, I should say, would do those negotiations. So this has been updated to reflect those assignments, to accurately reflect what we do, and bring these references up to date. In addition to that, the Planning and Development Committee, at my suggestion, actually, it was to make some other subtle changes in here to better empower the community to be more flexible and responsive to opportunities in the use of tax increment financing. What I mean by that is, the previous policy, or the current policy, I should say, not this one, required that a minimum increased value on a, on a development in order to qualify for consideration of a TIF, a Tax Increment Financing and Credit Enhancement Agreement, was a minimum of $500,000. Okay? That's served us well. We have consistently done that through the, through the years. However, there are criteria in here that talks about job creation, that talks about other benefits to the community that may not rise to that level. So what we've effectively done is changed this to the $500,000 being a guideline, but on an individual basis, the council would have the ability to negotiate with a developer based on these other benefits, not just the end sum gain. Allowing the town more flexibility, more creative, more opportunistic approach. Secondly, what we did here is, historically, well, since I've been here, in the last eight years, every TIF that we have done has been absolutely, totally paid for by the developer. TIF documentation, the creation of it, costs anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000, typically. Historically, what the town would do is, the town would enter into a contract with someone to do that on behalf of the town, and then those costs were, were, you know, forward on, put on the developer. What we have found, and a more efficient way to do this, is in fact, the developer, such as Amira, Dentist Paper, has actually hired their law firms, or their folks, to actually draft this language. They would meet with the town. We would specify what our requirements, what our allocations were, what our captures were, to be included in that document, and then ultimately, of course, the council approves the document. So even though a third party, or a developer's party, is creating the draft, So even though a third party or a developer's party is creating the draft, it is absolutely, totally subject to the will and the approval of the town council. So we didn't give away that, certainly. But what we have done effectively is to eliminate the unnecessary paperwork and the passing on of bills and so forth by getting to the, the end result much quicker. And I believe those are the two primary changes, other than the ref, the references. In this document, if you, if you folks should like to update it for your use.
Dean, I, I have a question here. I guess, are we sending this to public hearing? Or has it already been to public hearing?
Yeah, this is not an ordinance, so it doesn't need a public hearing. Just a call. Thanks, Tom.
It, it doesn't need a public hearing, just a call.
Not an ordinance.
All right. How do we get that cleared up? You all set, Dean?
If you are.
Thank you. Public comments?
Terry, I think, has a question. Terry?
Seeing none?
No, Terry, Terry.
I just got a quick question for Dean. On the section two where it says guidelines, and the, that must be met, that was crossed out, but when you get down to the item two, I, I thought you just said that we were going to eliminate that, or, or is this just, I mean, how, I, I don't see any flexibility in this.
Sure. The, the reason that must be met has been removed so that this section, under guidelines, can be treated as guidelines. They're not binding. With the language remaining in there that says that, that these must be met, that becomes mandatory. Once you take that out, now you've got what are guidelines. So the council still has the ability to do, I mean, ideally, something would come in of that value, but this allows that exception to be made, if the council so wishes, because not every one of these criteria has to be met.
Right. So, so that item two in there is going to be deleted?
No, it will, it will stand as a guideline.
Okay. But it's not. Okay, so I, all right, so I.
It's not binding.
I, I got you. So by deleting that must be met, gives.
Correct.
Got you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dean.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we adopt the tax increment finance policy amendments as presented this evening and as recommended from Planning and Development.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. The next item is committee reports, and I realize this probably won't be many because this is the first one, council meetings. But Services Committee, Counselor McAvoy?
No report from me. Thank you.
Infrastructure, Counselor Marble?
The only thing I have to report is that we'll be meeting on a postponed basis, I think tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock, with the new Public Works Director.
Planning and Development, Counselor Shakespeare?
We did have a meeting on July the 15th, and we did discuss the TIF policy, which you just heard from our Economic Development Director. So I won't belabor that and go on over that again. But we also discussed home occupation. Presented, our director presented, recommend, recommended changes to the home section of the zoning ordinance. The intent is to expedite review and approval of applications that pose minimal residential neighborhoods, revised language, to create an option for the code enforcement officer to make the determination of whether to process the application or forward the application to the planning board for a more formal public hearing and review process. Also gives the applicant the option to, of moving the review process directly to the planning board upon submission, if preferred, and eases the restriction from three-quarter ton to one-ton truck weight associated with home occupation. Economic Development Director revised and presented, will present this at a future meeting. And that was it.
Thank you. And everything that we discussed in Finance tonight, you have just heard and saw us vote on. So that takes care of Finance. Managers report, there will be none tonight. The manager is off this week, helping her son move into his new residence in Connecticut. So the next item would be Counselor Comments. Counselor Saroyz?
No comment.
Counselor Shakespeare?
Comment I'd like to make is something we, we're discussing a little bit in Finance, and that's Children's Day is coming up. Just to remind the public that on the 15th of this month, of August, we will have Children's Day at the Weatherby School. And bring all your kids and have a great time. We're still working on it and preparation for it. And also, there is a, for those who haven't taken the opportunity to purchase a raffle ticker, those are available. The boat is at Angler's Restaurant, and it's, it's a nice boat, and the raffle also is for a bicycle and also a grill unit, all donations. And take advantage of this, and it's for the kids of Hamden. Thank you.
Counselor Wild?
No comment tonight.
Counselor Dupree?
No comment.
Counselor Marble?
Yeah. I'm going to bring this up just in the case there is a child in Hamden or in my neighborhood missing a pet. My wife and I have discovered that we have a freeloader in our garage, and I Googled the animal and found out it's not a guinea pig and it's not a hamster, it's what's called a fancy or pet rat. But it is a pet and it acts like it. I'm not sure what to do. So if there's anyone out there in the animal control world, give me a call. But more, more significantly, I just worried that there's some nine-year-old kid somewhere going, what happened to my pet? So I currently have that pet. If you need it, give me a call, please.
Thank you. Counselor McAvoy?
Yeah, that's a tough one. I, 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 yeah, I can just remind everybody to shop local and buy American. Good night, Hamden, and I, you know, he's got your rat.
I can follow that a little bit. I got a pet skunk around my house if someone is looking for one.
Okay.
I'm all set.
And I have no comment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.